Welcome to the Northampton Township Board of Supervisors meeting. It is Wednesday, April 23rd, 2025. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First off, we had a little construction behind us. We'll get the flags into the right positions for the next meeting. We all looked in one direction and it was not there. A couple of quick things before we do the special presentations. First, there's two opportunities for public comment this evening. First opportunity is for agenda items only. If you'd like to speak on an agenda item, please sign up on the sheet in the back. I will call you to the microphone and ask you to just state your name for the record and if you're a resident. That first one is for agenda items only. There's a second opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting, and that is not limited to any specific topic. And if you'd like to do that, please sign up in the back of the room. And again, I'll recognize you and have you come to the microphone. So, real quick, before we get started, I was able to share some really excellent news today with the board, right before the meeting. Myself, our township manager, Bob Pellegrino. In the audience tonight is Mike Sullivan, who's our Executive Director for our Water Authority in Northampton Township, and Vince Deon, who is on the Water Authority Board. We took a trip to Harrisburg today. Today was the public meeting for Penn Vest. Penn Vest is an organization that provides local municipalities with funding for special projects. The township, along with the Water Authority, but mostly with the Water Authority, applied for a $20 million funding to help with the PFAS contamination that's in our Churchville section. There are hundreds of homes that have contaminated wells. And I am thrilled to report tonight that the Penn Vest Organization Board did approve our application. It is a combination of a grant for $13 million. That's $13 million of money coming from the state, through the federal government, through the state to Northampton Township, to fully connect homes to public water that have contaminated wells, soup to nuts, no cost to the homeowner. And then, the second part of it is a $7 million low-interest loan, if needed, that can be used in the future. And we may not even need that, but it is part of the award. So, really, just fantastic news for those people that live in Churchville. And that's going to take the water, I think Bob's going to talk a little bit about it later. You'll see a map, right all the way through that Churchville neighborhood, all the way to Bustleton Pike and beyond. It's phenomenal work. I just want to say that the Water Authority, the board, the staff, Mike, you're here, so I have to embarrass you. The engineer, Chris, put just countless hours in. We provided support, this board, the township staff, and we really came through for the people out there. It's just a fantastic piece of news. I just wanted to get it out while we had a lot of people in the room, so more people could hear it. But it's pretty exciting. So, thank you, Mike. Thank everybody over on your end. Bob's going to give some more detail about it in his liaison report. So, thank you.
Kind of like that, too, though. I think there's a meeting May 16th with the Navy that Mike's having in the township. So, I think it's important, that's what it means, I'm going to. Because I know we got the grant money initially allocated, but we need to follow up with the Navy. And that meeting's on May 16th. And, Mike, that's still on, right?
I'm sorry?
The meeting for May 16th with the Navy?
It's tened.
Tened, okay. So, I think we really need, I mean, it's great getting the grant, but we also need to make sure we have the Navy that's going to fulfill this, too, the responsibilities. Right now, we have agreement to have a meeting on May 16th. I think it's just critically important that we stay on top of that and make sure that meeting happens with the Navy.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of pressure on the Navy right now. I know Mike has put a lot of pressure on. We're getting a lot of pressure out of our congressman's office. And what we want them to do, to your point, Barry, is fill the gaps. There are gaps in the funding. And let's not forget, this is the Navy's problem. The Navy caused this. However, this board, we did say, is not going to wait for the Navy. We didn't wait for the Navy. We were able to trudge forward and get our own set of funding. And again, what's most important is getting everybody on public water. But you're right, the Navy still has to have--
Yeah, the Navy's still a very important part. I mean, getting the funding's organized, but the Navy's got to be a critical part of this thing.
And I think Bob's going to have some of that in this report, so. Please, why don't you come up to the microphone, Mike?
First of all, I want to thank the supervisors, the township staff, for their cooperation and help during this process. And I do want to also mention that our state-elected officials were instrumental in helping us obtain this funding. They worked with us virtually every day, behind the scenes, pushing this effort. So, once again, I wanted to thank the elected officials that helped us during this process.
Yeah, Senator Farrey, Kristin Marcel, who actually met us out there today. We met in her office today. And Joe Hogan, all were instrumental in getting this done. And this was really a lot of pressure through the state. Brian Fitzpatrick's office doesn't have a lot to do with state, but he is the guy for the Navy. And we're talking to him pretty regularly about, again, as Barry pointed out, these gaps that we need to try to get filled. It's their responsibility. I did go off the agenda a little bit, but it was late breaking news. We got back about 5:30. I did get the opportunity to testify in front of the Penn Vest Board today, plead our case, and also thank them. One piece of information, I was going to wait till later, but I'll say it now, is, if you recall, we sent a letter to the Secretary of the DEP, asking them to help. Secretary Shirley sits on the Penn Vest Board. I met with her personally today after the meeting, and she recognized the letter, and she did, in fact, vote in the affirmative to give us, her vote was a yes, where she wanted to make sure. So, the letter did help. It brought us to the top of her thought pile. So, that was good news. With that, we have a couple of special presentations tonight. We have some of our emergency services here. We'll start out. We have EMS Week. Coming up, we have Police Week and Public Works Week. So, we'll go down to the floor, if anybody else would like to come.
Would you call our Lisa? Chief, we're not in the meeting. Hello? Thanks for coming, guys. Okay. Thanks. Sure. It's okay. When you call our Lisa, Chief, we're not in the meeting. Hello? Thanks for coming, guys. Okay. Thanks. Sure. Sure. It's okay. When you call our Lisa, Chief, we're not in the meeting. Hello? Thanks for coming, guys. Okay. Thanks. So, each year, we recognize the police, the police for what they do, every day, to help protect our community, our community and the communities around us and all over this fine nation. Police Recognition Week is May 11th through May 17th. We won't have a meeting until after that, so we wanted to invite you tonight. And we do have a proclamation. I won't read it word for word, but I'll try to read the important things. "The Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers' Memorial Day, and the week in which it falls. The members of Northampton Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Northampton Township, and you do that every day with honor," I will say. I added that part. "It's important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department. But it's also important that the members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, protecting them against violence and disorder, and protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression or intimidation." And I think you know that well. You wear that with honor as well. "The Northampton Police Department has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency." That's due to you guys' leadership. "That increasingly provides a public service." So, now, therefore, this is the fun part, the Board of Supervisors calls upon all the citizens of Northampton Township, all patriotic civil and educational organizations, to observe the week of May 11th through May 17th, 2025, as Police Week, commemorating police officers past and present. By their faithful and loyal devotion, their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their community, and in doing so, have established themselves as enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. The Northampton Township Board of Supervisors calls upon the citizens of Northampton Township to observe May 15th as Peace Officers' Memorial Day, in honor of those peace officers who, through their courageous deeds, have lost their lives and have become disabled in the performance of duty. So, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for being here. Thank you for representing your departments, all the great work you do. As many of you know, I work with the police every single day, and I don't say this lightly, I'm honored to work with every single one of you in that department, every day. I enjoy it, and it's a pleasure. So, thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. A little applause for these guys, huh? We have to say something.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the police department appreciates your continued support. The men and women of the police department also appreciate your support, and I thank you for recognizing their work, that excellent work that they do every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve, come on up. Sir. Thank you. Followed right on the heels of the police, a recognition week. If I can invite our friends from Emergency Medical Services, Tri-Hampton Rescue Squad. Chief, hello?
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Guys, hello?
I'll sugarcoat it, all right? You have COVID or anything, right? No.
So, this happens every year. The Emergency Medical Services Week is also in May, and it is right before our meeting, so we like to try to get you recognized in April as well. And if everybody doesn't know, the Tri-Hampton Rescue Squad is our sole provider for emergency medical services. These are our paramedics. These are the ones that are coming out every day to get us out of the harms way that we seem to get ourselves in quite often. And I would like to read the proclamation, most of it, but not all of it. "Whereas the emergency medical services are a vital public service, the members of the emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury." And this is quality. I want to tell you, this is quality medical care that you see right here and who they represent. "Whereas the emergency medical services team consists of first responders, EMTs, paramedics, medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, and on and on and on, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of the emergency medical services team, whether career or volunteer-- Oh, come on up, guys. We're glad you're here. --engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. It is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Therefore, the Board of Supervisors calls upon the citizens of Northampton Township and all patriotic civil and educational organizations to observe the week and recognition of this event, and do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th to 24th, 2025, as Emergency Medical Services Week. With the theme "We Care for Everyone," I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities." Thank you so much. I do want to just make one comment. As I mentioned earlier, I work every day with the police, and I work every day with our emergency medical services. I am always in awe, as I watch you guys work on a scene and save lives every day. It is like clockwork. It is the teamwork, it is the training, you know exactly what to do. And what really is amazing, that the teams that you have put together, you don't even have to talk to each other. Each team member knows what the other one's going to do, and I know every second counts. And those seconds that you have trained to save, save lives. And so, I commend you for that. And as I said with the police, I am honored to work with you on the street every day. You guys are fantastic. Thank you very much for what you do for our community. Chief Dowd, thank you. On behalf of all of us, to your whole organization, and of course, I ask you if you'd like to say a couple words.
Of course. Thank you, Chairman. We appreciate the opportunity, and we certainly appreciate the recognition. Men and women to my right are just a small sample of our over 80 dedicated providers that we have here in Northampton Township and the surrounding community. We really appreciate the recognition. We do care for everyone, which is this year's theme, and we look forward to a continued partnership, and we enjoy the support from Northampton Township here. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Have a quick session.
Sure. People will be back. Yes. Sure, I will be back.
All right, everybody. Is anybody in there? Bob, stand up.
Thanks. Yes. I just want to make one final comment that I did make while you're standing here. And just to remind everybody, this board added a paramedic unit to the Holland section of the township last year. That paramedic unit is on duty 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, seven days a week. It has been quite effective, and this is the group that staffs it. So, we have two paramedic units on duty in Northampton Township at every given time. Thank you for providing that service, and thank you to the board for recognizing the need to protect the people in Holland for faster response times as well. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks, guys. I have to adjust the microphone. I am, thank you. So, similar to police and EMS, every year, we recognize this week for National Public Works Week. And in recognition of that, we have a proclamation. I'd like to read some of it, similar to Chairman Selsker. "Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Pennsylvania. And whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, these are engineers, managers, employees from state and local government. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children of the state of Pennsylvania to gain knowledge of and maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities, now therefore be resolved, the Northampton Township Board of Supervisors do hereby designate the week of May 18th to 24th, 2025, as National Public Works Week, with the theme "People, Purpose, Presence." We urge all our people to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designated to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life." And I will say, it was not until I was elected to this board and went on a grand tour of the township with our township manager, Mr. Pellegrino, did I realize how much our public works really does, and the projects they undertake, and the things they are capable of. I think more than once, I said to Mr. Pellegrino when we did this a few years ago, "Our guys did that?" And they did. It's not only saving time, but more importantly, it's keeping the township running. So, you guys are the unsung heroes of the township, and it's my pleasure to hand you this proclamation.
Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. To echo-- Just stand. Here we go. To echo everything you've heard already, we appreciate the support in public works that we get from the board and the township to continue maintaining all the infrastructure of the township. So, thank you. We wouldn't be able to do it without your support. So, thank you. Yes, I think there is one. One color. One agenda. Jason.
Chief Dowd, come on up. Name for the record, but we know you live here.
Jason Dowd. Good evening, once again, members of the board, Mr. Pellegrino, and fellow residents of Northampton Township. As you know, my name is Jason Dowd. I am the chief of operations here at Tri-Hampton Rescue Squad, your 911 emergency medical service provider. I'm here tonight on behalf of our entire organization to express our sincere gratitude to the township, not only for our EMS Week recognition, but also for bringing forward Resolution 2511 in support of Pennsylvania House Bill 1152. As many of you know, under current state law, insurance reimbursements for 911 emergency medical services are often sent directly to patients rather than to emergency medical service providers who deliver the care. In 2024 alone, Tri-Hampton Rescue Squad lost over $175,000 in revenue due to these misdirected payments. That's money that was never received despite having provided the emergency medical care on-site at the time, service in the field. House Bill 1152 seeks to correct this by requiring insurance to remit payment directly to the EMS provider. This change is not only just about financial fairness, it's about sustainability. When funds go uncollected, the burden ultimately shifts to the municipalities, threatening long-term viability and sustainability of local EMS, which ultimately compromises public safety. We are incredibly thankful to Northampton Township that they have taken this leadership role in supporting this logical legislation. Your adoption of Resolution 2511 tonight sends a powerful message to Harrisburg and beyond, and that this community values and stands behind its emergency responders. On behalf of all of our EMTs and paramedics, and all the staff, and all the thousands of patients that we treat each year, we thank you for your continued support and for being champions of emergency medical services in our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief Dowd. You'll hear more about the resolution that the chief mentioned a little further down in our new business. That's all for public comments, and we'll move on to consent items, approval of the minutes. Paula.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, if there are no objections, I request that the minutes of March 26th be approved by unanimous consent.
Any objections? Very good. Accounts payable, Kim?
Yes, I have the bills list for April 9th, 2025. Total all funds, $1,769,352.69. And I have the bills list for April 23rd, 2025. Total all funds, $4,133,565.52.
Thanks, Kim. Any comments on that? Next, we'll have a consent item, 25-1C. Barry?
Yeah, 25-1C pertains to the development that the Lucca did on Old Jacksonville Road. It's a minor land development adjustment, so that's all. Nothing major there.
Thank you. We'll do that under consent. And also, Barry, 25-7?
25-7 is a toner development that was done on Polinsky, and once again, it says a land development adjustment need to be done, approval, so.
Thank you. Bob, F?
Yes, 25-8 is pursuant to, I think, our largely successful efforts to maintain 10 miles of roadways each year in the public works department. And if I may make a motion?
I think you'll just have to say what it is.
That's for the consent.
Very well. Go ahead.
The resolution authorizes the township to participate in the Wit Pain Township Road Resurfacing Program for ultra-thin bonded wear course application on approximately 1.66 miles of the township road system, and further authorizing the township manager to execute all required contracts with asphalt maintenance solutions. This is a joint effort through Wit Pain Township in Montgomery County.
Okay. Thanks, Bob. Grant application for DCED, Kim?
Yeah, to help meet the township's unfunded mandate of the municipal separate stormwater system permit, the township proposes improvements to an existing basin in the Tanner Estates neighborhood located on Syracuse Lane. By constructing new best management practices to reduce stormwater flow, the basin is expected to achieve approximately 16% of the township's sediment reduction requirement for the MS4 program. To help cover the costs, the township proposes applying for a Pennsylvania Small Water and Sewer Grant offered by the Department of Community and Economic Development. The total cost estimate to the project is $428,270. The grant request is $364,029.50, with a 15% township match of $64,240.50. A requirement of the grant program is that we have to adopt a resolution, so. There we are.
Thank you, Kim. And finally, 25-10, share grant application. Paula?
Okay. The administration is recommending-- This is considering Resolution 25-10. It's authorizing the local share account grant application for decorative-- Excuse me-- Decorative street lighting on Second Street Pike. The administration is recommending the township seek funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development statewide local share account to fund the install of pedestrian lighting along Second Street Pike, from Bustleton Pike to Newtown Richborough Road. The requested grant amount for the construction is $334,141.50. And may I make a motion, Mr. Chairman? I move to adopt Resolution 25-10, authorizing the township administration to apply to the Commonwealth Financing Authority through its statewide local share assessment program for a grant to install--
Okay, the administration is recommending, or this is considering Resolution 25-10. It's authorizing the local share account grant application for decorative, direct, excuse me, decorative street lighting on Second Street Pike. The administration is recommending that township seek funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development statewide local share account to fund the install of pedestrian lighting along Second Street Pike from Bustleton Pike to Newtown Richborough Road. The requested grant amount for the construction is $334,141.50. And may I make a motion, Mr. Chairman? I move to adopt Resolution 2510, authorizing the township administration to apply to the Commonwealth Financing Authority through its statewide local share assessment program for a grant to install pedestrian lighting in Richborough and to authorize board chairman Adam Selsker and township manager Robert Pellegrino to execute all contract documents required for this project.
Thank you, Paula. And then I'll also ask for a motion to accept all the consent items as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second.
I'll second it.
Is there any other discussion? Barry?
Nope.
No.
Kim? Paula? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries. Thanks. Next, we'll move on to new business and I have this one. And this goes directly to what Chief Dowd presented earlier. House Bill 1152 was recently introduced, I'm on screen right, yeah. House Bill 1152 was recently introduced in the PA General Assembly to amend the insurance company law of 1921. Believe it or not, these guys are operating under a law from 1921, over 100 years old, to address a longstanding problem with insurance company reimbursements. I don't think I'm going to go through this whole thing. I think Chief Dowd did a great job of explaining it. If you missed it, it's pretty clear. Right now, the ambulance provides a service to you. They do bill for part of that service or that service. And there is no requirement for the insurance company, the medical insurance company, to send that money directly to the ambulance service, in our case, Trihampton. In fact, many times, the money goes directly to the patient or the patient's family. And unfortunately, that money is never rerouted or paid to the ambulance, which puts them in a really difficult position of operating in a deficit. As Chief Dowd pointed out, without this bill, the burden then falls on everyone in the municipality to make up that difference. You heard me talk earlier about the great service we get from Trihampton. It's incredible. These guys work together and as a team, we have two medic units on at any given time. But we still have to make it sustainable. And with this deficit comes difficulties and challenges for all the taxpayers of Northampton. So in this case, what we're asking the legislature to do is support a bill that would require that the payments go directly to the ambulance bypassing the patient itself to ensure that the ambulance gets, the ambulance company gets paid. So with that, I move to approve Resolution R 2511, supporting PA House Bill 1152, requiring insurance companies to directly reimburse emergency medical service providers for dispatched 911 emergency medical services provided to cover individuals. Is there a second?
Second.
No further comments from me. I think it's self-explanatory. They need to do this. They should have done this dozens of years ago. They've been fighting for this. I think as long as I've been in the emergency services, I've heard this as an issue and it just needs to get corrected. I know our legislators will support it. I hope we can get more. Can you second it, Bob?
I did.
Any other comments?
The existing system has been a point of frustration to me and I'm on the sidelines. I can only imagine how EMS feels and you heard tonight the kind of deficiencies it creates in an already very thin margin area. So this can't pass fast enough.
Barry?
No, I agree too. And it actually puts, it saves the burden to the township because the shortfall is being paid by the township. Because basically, the people who go in the ambulance are keeping the money, which is totally unfair. And so the township has to step off for that. So that makes it equal. So I fully support it.
Thanks. Kim?
I definitely agree with this. I see as a medical professional, and I have seen this in our own practice, the same sort of thing. And it is very frustrating. So I am praying this goes through for you guys.
Paula?
Yes, it's been going on too long. I know a lot of people don't know they have to pay, though they have to give, pay you guys the money back. So it's good. I hope it goes through.
Okay. No other comments? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you to the emergency medical services for being here tonight, for your proclamation and also for supporting this legislation. Appreciate that. Next up, Bob bids for Jacksonville Road curb adjustments.
Yes, thank you. This has been addressed at previous meetings. I'll note that the township has now received seven bids for the Jacksonville Road Ashley Drive curb adjustment that's approaching Bristol Road. The bids ranged from 82898 to 169620. And the project is intended to replace the existing delineators on Jacksonville Road, which are frequently inadvertently destroyed by the snow plows. This will create a permanent curb, which the reason the non-permanent delineators were there was for safety reasons. So this will be a permanent safety feature. If I may make a motion?
Please.
I move to award a bid to B. Blair Corporation in Ivyland, Pennsylvania for curb construction at Jacksonville Road and Ashley Drive based on unit prices in the bid proposal for a total contract cost of $82,898.50 based on estimated quantities for the project as determined by the township engineer and authorize the township manager to execute required documents for the project.
I'll second it.
I'll second it, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further comment?
It's a safety issue and it's costing us money to constantly replace the temporary delineators. So this is the correct solution.
Kim, anything else?
I would like to say that to all my residents in Ivy Green, I've been talking to about this, this is the improvements that are going to help so that you can get out of your neighborhood safely. It's very important, so.
Thanks. Paula?
Great, no, I think it's great.
Public Works is on it.
Fully supported. Good concept.
That's great. And I do as well. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Bob, you're still on.
I am.
Busy night for Public Works.
It is. So this relates to the yearly roadway milling program. The township received seven bids for the 2025 project ranging from 232, 354 to 346,206. If I may make a motion?
Please.
I move to award a bid to Heidelberg Materials Northeast LLC in Allentown, Pennsylvania for roadway milling in the amount of $2.25 per square yard for one and a half inch maximum depth milling and $0.50 per square yard for tack coat application for a total contract cost of $284,105.20 based on estimated quantities as determined by the township engineer and to authorize the township manager to execute all contract documents required for this project.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any further comment?
It's a yearly thing. That's the lowest price. Let's do it.
Kim?
I agree. Go for it.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, consider an appointment to the Veterans Advisory Commission.
Okay, good. I wanted to ask the board if we could move to appoint Dennis Klinger to the back, the Veterans Advisory Commission, to fill an unexpired term effective immediately and expiring on December 31, 2025.
All right. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments, Paula?
No, he's great. I've spoken with him on the phone quite a few times. He's a good guy. I'm excited. He's young. We'll have young, some young guys there now.
Fantastic. Bob, any?
Nothing.
Barry?
What branch of the military is he from, Paula?
You know, I think, I have two that I had talked to. I think he might be, I'm sorry, Dennis, if I put you wrong, from the Air Force.
Maybe what?
Air Force.
Oh, Air Force, okay. Kim, any comments?
Nope, it's all good for me.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Next up, I'm sorry, my papers were messed up. Liaison reports. Kim?
Yes. First, I have the Senior Center. Have you purchased your Senior Center lottery tickets? Drawings are held at the first Tuesday of every month. Tickets are $10 and you can purchase them at the Senior Center. On Thursday, April 24, the Northampton Township Police Department will visit the center to provide an informative presentation on fraud prevention. All are welcome to attend. Spring is here. The annual Spring Fling Shopping Event will be on Friday, April 25, this Friday, from 5:00 to 8:30. Come and join us for a fun-filled evening of shopping and gift basket raffles. May I have your attention? Monday, May 19, real estate professional Margaret Ko from RE/MAX will offer a presentation on downsizing, room staging and tips on how to sell your home. On Thursday, May 22 and Thursday, May 29, meet Peaco and Maui. Our Northampton Township Police Department's K-9 unit is stopping by the center to visit with the community. Now, you know that's going to be, everybody's going to go to that because those dogs are so darn cute. Summer of 1969, summer party tickets are available now. Friday, June 20, 12 to 2:30, $22 per person. Tickets are limited, so get yours today. This event is for members and non-members. All right, Parks and Rec. The Parks and Rec Department officially welcomes spring and warmer weather at our annual Breakfast with a Bunny on April 12. Families from across the township filled the Senior Center and enjoyed a delicious breakfast provided by Manny's Restaurant and Deli, a magic show and pictures with the bunny. Special thanks to supervisors Kim Rose, Barry Moore and Adam Selsker for supporting the Parks and Rec Department. The month of May will bring events for everyone in the community. May 2 is Puzzle Palooza. Get ready to compete with another puzzle for prizes. Check-in is 5:30 PM and the competition begins at 6:00. May 9 will be our spring Bingo Bash. Don't miss this amazing event from 6:30 to 8:30 at the Senior Center. BYOB and amazing prizes for winners. On May 17, it's time to clean out your closets and basement for our annual community yard sale. The $12 registration fee puts your house on the electronic map and the Park and Rec Department provides a sign to put up on your lawn. Mark your calendars, the warmer weather means summer is coming. Don't miss our official kickoff for the summer events at our Sun and Fun Fest on Friday, June 6, from 5:30 to 9:30. Come out with your neighbors and listen to live music, enjoy food, beverage trucks, lawn games, pony rides, crafters and vendors. Come celebrate summer with your neighbors. The summer update brochure will be in the mailboxes in about one month. We're excited to announce a new summer league, Kickin' It Old School Adult Kickball League on Monday and Thursday nights beginning June 16. Come and compete and relive your glory days on the playground. Or not. Discount tickets to your favorite summer attractions are now on sale at the Administration Building, the Rec Center and the Senior Center. Call ahead to ensure availability. Now, I just wanted to end my reports by mourning the passing of Pope Francis. It is a great loss to humanity. The Argentine-born Pontiff returned to work following a battle with double pneumonia and related health complications after a five-week hospital stay. He made his last public appearance at St. Peter's Basilica on Easter Sunday, offering a final blessing for the world's 1.3 billion Catholics, many right here in Northampton Township. Pope Francis was the first Jesuit Pope, the first from the Americas and the 266th leader of the Catholic Church. His papacy, which began in 2013, was marked by his emphasis on mercy, humility and social justice as well as outspoken advocacy for the poor, migrants and the environment. He was a pope for all people. My favorite quote from Pope Francis was this, "Rivers do not drink their own water. Trees do not eat their own fruit. The sun does not shine on itself and flowers do not spread their fragrance for themselves. Living for others is a rule of nature. We are all born to help each other, no matter how difficult it is. Life is good when you are happy, but much better when others are happy because of you. Rest in peace, Pope Francis."
Thank you, Kim. That was nice. Paula?
Okay, I wanted to talk about Vets Advisory Commission. Memorial Day Ceremony is going to be May 26 at 9 o'clock at the Dombrowski Park, which is the one with the waterfall in the middle of town, Richborough. And we, at the commission here, are continuing to request any letters written by veterans that were mailed to their family or their friends. And you can please contact Lisa Russo here at the township and she'll take care of that for you, for the details. Okay, the deadline for the submission of the letters is May 1. So if anyone's, get on it, if everyone has any. Okay, Flag Day is, the ceremony is June 14, right on Flag Day. And that's, we're going to have a ceremony at the Recreation Center area right off of Newtown Richborough Road. Okay, we haven't determined the time yet, but we know our Boy and Girl Scouts will be coordinating most, a lot of the activities. And that's all I have for the vet. The library, we didn't have a, we didn't have a meeting, so there is no report.
Okay, thanks, Paula. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So for many months, I've been doing my so-called monthly PFOS update. Some months were more sparse than others, but as you heard at the beginning of the meeting, this is a very happy report. And we have a map, I think we were going to try to put, oh, thank you, there it is. So you'll see, and hopefully those of you watching at home are able to expand it sufficiently to see the legend there, but this is the map of the affected or potentially affected areas that are being focused upon. And much of the news that you heard at the beginning of the meeting from Chairman Selsker is hot off the presses meeting. This came directly from Harrisburg in a meeting today that he attended. So I will say a couple of things and then Chairman Selsker, if there's anything you want to add, because you were actually there today, I'll turn it over to you. But I will say first that if there are any upcoming meetings involving anyone, most specifically the Navy, as they do remain responsible for this catastrophe, we will post those publicly as soon as that information becomes available. I also want to say that the authority deserves tremendous credit for where we stand now. I've, in a variety of ways, demonstrated not only that it is the federal government's responsibility to correct this mess, but the glacially slow speed at which they seem to correct anything. So knowing that, we, and I say we, the authority, this board, this township and its governance have found alternative ways to get our citizens what they need, what they deserve. And I'm very happy to hear that news. But I do want to point out, this does not absolve the Navy of its responsibility. So while this may fix the problem in terms of the water supply, this does not entirely fix the problem in terms of continuing to hold the federal government, specifically the Navy, responsible. And I know there will be continued efforts to do so. But in the meantime, our citizens shouldn't have to wait for the federal government to act. Our governance has found alternative solutions and I'm very happy about that. So if there's anything in addition, Chairman Selsker, since you did testify today and attend the hearing in Harrisburg, I'd turn it over to you for any additional information you might not have provided at the beginning.
Sure. I think it's just most important to take a look at the map. For those residents, I don't know who may be watching or see the repeat, but the orange area and the purple area, they are the two areas that we were concentrating on for this grant application. The areas just to the left of that, which would be pink and some yellow, that is the area that the Navy is focusing on all the way through Upland Drive. By the way, just for bearing, the green line at the bottom is Bristol Road and the furthest left dotted vertical line is Second Street Pike. So that's Second Street Pike and Bristol Road and then Bristol Road moving down toward the Churchville Inn, if you will, down Past Valley Road there. So the pink area and the yellow area, that's where the Navy had been, is concentrating their efforts. Actually, there is construction going on now. You may see a lot of equipment out there, piping and things like that. That public water is going in. What we went out to represent in the grant application that we've talked about in the past is that orange, purple area. And it's the purple area all the way to Bustleton Pike. And then there are some houses on the other side of Bustleton Pike that may have public water in front of them, but do not have hookups. All of those homes, close to 400, I believe, Mike? Is that the right number? 334? I'll call that close. But 334 homes, they will get public water. Everybody in that area will get public water. And what's amazing about that is that is outside of the Navy's current area. Again, as Bob pointed out, as Barry pointed out earlier, it doesn't absolve them from their responsibility here. In the end, I don't think that our residents, the water authority or anybody should have to pay a dime for what the Navy did. the Water Authority, or anybody should have to pay a dime for what the Navy did. The Navy owns it. It's theirs. They need to come up with the money. There are gaps, which I think we have some time to fill now. But really, what's most important is this is about clean water. Everybody deserves clean water, and we're going to get everybody clean water. I don't know what the timing is. I think that's to be determined. The grant process has to follow through, and then all the construction bids and things like that. But I think as soon as, it sounds like as soon as you know that, that information will be shared.
Chairman, I would mention that this is shovel-ready project. It says, you said, going through the grant process and before the funds are available.
Yep. So, shovel-ready. That means the plans are good to go. I learned that. So, it was really a great day. I think there's just, there's a lot of excitement that our community got recognized. I did mention earlier, when I spoke to the Secretary of the DEP, she made specific comment how strong our state legislators pushed this through, this process. They were very vocal. They were operating on our behalf. That's Frank Ferry. That's Kristin Marcel. That's Joe Hogan. They were on our side. They're on the people's side of our township to get them clean water. And even she was quoted by saying, "Everybody deserves clean water." So, I was glad to hear her say that. Just had a couple of notes that I just want to check, make sure I didn't miss anything. The most important thing is that that's going to move all the way through those, this covers everybody, too. It doesn't, it doesn't matter what your number is.
Well, does that, let me ask that point, though, Adam, because the EPA is saying the standard's four.
Everybody's getting water, no matter what your number is.
So, even four?
Correct.
So, anything above four?
Four.
Okay.
Everybody in that orange and purple area is getting water.
Okay, so that's important, because before the Navy said only up to 12.
This is not a Navy project. This is our project.
Okay.
That's the key.
If the property owner wants it.
Yeah, okay.
If they decline it, right. Everybody gets it if they want it. But yeah, that's a good question, Barry.
Yeah.
Four was the number, but now everybody's going to get it. If you have two, that's a number. If you have zero, that's a number.
Okay, so even if you have two, you got it. Mike, is that correct?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so everybody's going to get it, okay.
Everybody gets water.
What's the role of the Navy going forward now?
We continue to work with the Navy.
Mike, can you?
Yeah, why don't you come up?
Yeah.
There are still, outside of this project, there are still areas in the township of concern. We continue to work with the Navy, with the federal elected officials, to continue to move this process, and we continue to look for alternative funding, you know, maybe even subsequent Penn Vest funding for further options into the township.
Okay. I wish, I know there's a tentative meeting May 16th. I would try to really enforce that with the Navy and the township, just to make sure we have that follow-up on it.
Yeah, we do have to remember that there's still township, municipal authority-owned wells that need to be taken care of, and there are other properties. So, there are other, there's still other opportunities to get that done. We're currently buying water. The water that these folks get will probably be purchased water as well. So, there is still costs that I think they need to buck up on, you know. You know, we thanked a lot of people, but I think there is one other group that we didn't thank, and I think the board here would all agree. We have to thank the residents that came forward. The residents came forward in September, and they came to this meeting, and they said, "Hey, we need help." And I think we all said, "We want to help you." Mike wanted to help. The Water Authority Board wanted to help. And not only did they come out, but they shared their test data with us, which really helped drive the decision process at the state level. All that test data that was shared with the Water Authority was used in their calculations to determine, "Hey, do we really need to fund this area?" And in the end, it was yes. So, thank you to those residents that came forward. This is a good example of your local government working for you quickly, as quickly as the government can work. But we did act promptly. And, you know, from September to now, that's seven months. That's incredible. So, again, thanks to you guys. Thanks, Bob, for yielding some time, but I'm glad to go over that, the area of concern. So, that's Valley Drive, that's Green Drive, pardon me, Hilltop, North Hilltop, Green all the way to Sherwood, Stratford Drive, and Charlotte. Some of those aren't labeled on there, but I wanted to call them out.
Okay. I'll continue my monthly reports.
Thanks, Bob.
This was a good one, so that's all I have.
We're very fortunate to have such great people that support us and work for us, legislators that are helping. They care.
Yeah.
And we're thankful to touch it.
Yeah, it was a pretty exciting day.
That's all I have.
Barry?
Yeah, sure. Couple of things. On zoning, the zoning hearing board met on April 14th. Several residential appeals that were pretty monitoring nature. Next meeting's going to be May 12th, and then the Planning Commission meeting will be on May 13th. My favorite topic, of course, is full-day kindergarten. And as everybody knows, full-day kindergarten is approved, and there's a card being sent out to all the residents. And one of the big issues we have now is making sure we have everybody sign up for full-day kindergarten that's eligible for it. So, the excitement with all the parents and the children is very good. And, you know, we have signs up at all the schools that are saying, you know, full-day kindergarten, sign up for it. So, we want to make sure people do that. That's going to go through to June, but all the schools are ready for that. We're all staffed up and ready to go, starting September of this year. The other topic I just want to talk briefly about is our golf course. Our golf course we purchased in 2018, so it's seven years now. It's been a great asset for the township. It's the only open space that actually pays for itself. So, we have 125 acres of land that's preserved. That could have been 100 houses, and that was a great transaction of a township. The demand for the golf remains very high. When we actually purchased a golf course, we had about 40,000 people playing rounds of golf each year. Now, we have over 52,000 rounds of golf each year. Golf revenue is up $86,000 from budget from 2024, and then food and beverage sales at Tavern on 10 is up by $116,000. So, that's doing exceptionally well. And I give a lot of credit to Bob Hellgrino and his staff in getting that golf course and getting it organized in place. It's been seven years now. It's really an outstanding place, and I really encourage now with the better weather for residents to go out to the golf course and enjoy it, even having lunch or dinner at the Tavern on the Green. Wedding sales, we're also seeing a huge increase there. Wedding sales are up 37% 2025 or 2024. So, that's a huge improvement there. And also, the advantage of the golf course is it's offsetting a lot of headcount, certain administrative expenses for the township. So, you generate a lot of positive cash flow, which is covering expenses of the township. In addition to that, the overall positive cash flow is about $500,000, which supplied to debt service. So, here we have an asset that the residents use. We have 50,000-plus rounds of golf every year. It's 125 acres preserved, no housing put on, no stress on our school district, and we're generating $500,000 of cash flow. So, I mean, it's really working very well for us. So, I just want, you know, remind people the importance of that particular asset. The other thing I just want to mention is that there's a lot of traffic congestion in town right near the old Wawa, and that's where the Ironworks Creek Park is. I guess about eight or nine years ago, we worked with the administration in getting a grant for that and getting approved. So, now, where Tanyard Road and Second Street Pike meet, we're going to have sidewalks completed from Tanyard Road all the way up to the shopping centers on both sides of the road. It always made me very nervous having children walking there, riding bikes, things like that. That's all going to be completed. So, it's going to be much safer for residents walking to town, especially kids on bikes. And the total cost of the construction is 100% paid by grants from the state of Pennsylvania. So, it's a win-win for everybody from that standpoint. So, no, it's all good. So, those are just a few things I wanted to comment on. Thank you.
Thanks, Barry. Just real quick for me. I just have one quick announcement. If anybody is interested in CPR training, they can go to the Fire Department Facebook page, Northampton Township Fire Department, and there is a sign up on there. There are some dates throughout the year, evening and morning classes, if you'd like to learn CPR. So, please, please do that. It is a life-saving technique, and since we have all the EMS folks, I felt obligated that I better say something. They're all looking at me out there. Next up, manager's report. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No report this evening.
Thank you. Assistant manager's report?
Good evening. I'd like to report the new basketball courts, the new pickleball courts, and a new rink surface. Construction is underway. The base course was installed this week. In the next week or so, the top course will be completed. We do have a, unfortunately, it'll take a 30-day cure period for the asphalt, so it won't be ready just yet. Once that is cured, the acrylic paint surface will be applied, and we anticipate that the courts, all courts will be ready later this, in probably about 30, 40 days.
Fantastic. Thanks, Bill. That's good news. Joe, solicitors' report.
Thank you. Yes, the minutes of this evening's meeting should reflect that the board met in executive session immediately prior to this evening's meeting for approximately 40 minutes. Present for the executive session were the five members of the Board of Supervisors, township manager, the assistant township manager, the township engineer, and me. Two matters were discussed, a matter of pending labor issues and a matter of pending litigation. No official action was taken during the executive session in regard to either of those matters, and no official action was required this evening as a result of that executive session. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Engineers' report. Amanda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No official report this evening, but I did just want to amend the township for the amazing efforts with that Penn Vest grant. Does show great teamwork between the township, the authority, all the state legislators. So, I know these grant processes can often be a significant amount of time, so that's amazing to see the efforts that everybody has put in to get this funding. So, great job and congratulations.
Thanks, Amanda. For somebody who works on a lot of grants, we appreciate.
Absolutely.
We appreciate it.
It is an amazing feat, for sure.
Appreciate the comments. Public comment, we have one. Ed Mayer.
Hi. Just state your name again for the record. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Ed Mayer, resident of Churchville for over 23 years. My head's spinning with all the fascinating news that we've revealed tonight to the community. I have to reverse the order in which I was going to say things because the news was coming out so fast. So, I'll start with the golf club. I got my text that the, and it never even occurred to me, that the Tavern on 10, rather, is a Mother's Day venue. And I got my text today, reminded me of that. So, that's another, another great, fabulous thing. The, I want to take advantage, I mainly want to talk about Resolution 2511, which is supporting House Bill 1152. This is, this will be a little bit hyperbolic, and I apologize in advance. I know it's the end of the meeting. But when I was listening to you, and I went and looked at 1152, and I saw the importance that it has on this community that was recognized tonight, I couldn't help but think about the Declaration of Independence and the 58 signers that it had, including Elbridge Gerry. He later became a vice president, but he inspired the term gerrymandering for manipulating political district boundaries. But he was a signer, and so was Charles Carroll of Carrollton. And he was the last living signer, last surviving signer. He was 95 when he died, and he outlived Jefferson and Adams, which was amazing at the time. And there was also somebody who didn't sign, John Dickinson from Pennsylvania. I'm sure you recognize that name. He opposed declaring independence at that moment, believing that the colonies should first form alliances like France. And Dickinson abstained from the vote and refused to sign. He later joined the Continental Army to support the war effort, so he wasn't considered a traitor or anything like that. Now, why am I talking about the Declaration of Independence and going kind of super hyperbolic? Well, it's because of the energy and positivity around this piece of legislation that you talked about as far as your resolution is palpable. And it made me think about the fact that what makes, what made the Declaration of Independence palpable at the time was what they call collective endorsement. 58 people signed the Declaration of Independence at grave risk. It could have been signed by one person, right? It could have been signed by John Hancock, who was the president of the Second Continental Congress. In fact, you recall, he signed his name so big and so broadly across the bottom of the Declaration because he wanted to ensure that King George could read it without his glasses. And be that as it may, I would, I'm here to ask you to please include another paragraph in your resolution that is signed by all the supervisors, not just the chairman, with respect, but all the supervisors. Since it was a unanimous vote to do the resolution, I think all five supervisors with the township's seal should be undersigned. The other thing I wanted to mention, that this is a fabulous piece of legislation, if you've read it. It's critically important, saves, can save the township money, and can fund an organization. Can anybody think of a better organization that needs this kind of funding? Representative Jill Cooper from the 55th District is the sole sponsor of the bill. The bill has 19 Republican cosigners and 19 Democratic cosigners. It has 38 cosigners on the bill. You know who didn't co-sign the bill? Representative Kristin Marcel from the 178th and Representative Joe Hogan from the 142nd. So, I would urge you to please include a paragraph that sends this letter to State Representative Kristin Marcel, to State Representative Joe Hogan, to State Senator Frank Ferry, and also to the Veterans Affairs and Emergency Preparedness Committee Chair and the Minority Chair. And the reason I ask for that is because this bill was sent to committee, like a lot of bills do. And if you know how a bill becomes law, in Washington, if you've ever heard that schooltime rhyme, how a bill becomes law, it goes to committee, and sometimes it doesn't come out of committee. But a powerful letter from this board, signed by all the members of this board, sent to our two representatives and to our state senator, and to the committee, and chair, and minority chair, for their consideration, I think would be extremely powerful for the board to do. And I think that, I think that that would send a message to both Representative Hogan and Marcel that their constituents are interested in this, the township is interested in this, and we want to make sure that they know that since we know they're not cosponsors, we want to get this to their attention. And I was almost reluctant to mention that last part until you said, Mr. Chairman, about how the woman who got your letter specifically remembered it, and it was top of mind for her when you met with her today. And I was thinking, it would be top of mind for these two legislatures, legislative representatives as well. And eventually, hopefully, it'll get to the Senate, where Senator Ferry will also recognize the letter that we sent. So, that's all I wanted to mention. Thank you very much. Sorry to take up so much time. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Ed. We have no other business with no other speakers. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.